The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I think that we have to give permission for the remote still. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got to call a forum first to establish there's a physical one here, so take your role.
Okay. Could we do a roll call? Sure. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Schoenmaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
So we have six Aldermen present and two Aldermen remote this evening. Alderman Moyer.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make the motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of second board Alderman David Parker and third board Alderman Mike Went at the 3rd Annual Council of Nancy Council meetings on March 17, 2020 due to personal illness.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Berg, point of order. Dirk, is it just vote by the people that are here?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor that are present physically, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and so our remote attendees, Alderman Went and Alderman Parker, are participating. So.
Mayor Ray Krieger.
Huh? Sorry?
Does Alderman Waldron and Moyer have microphones? Because I couldn't really hear Moyer speak.
So.
I don't know if Mike, if you could hear him.
Microphones are not close to them, so where we can just speak a little louder tonight? We'll see if that... Oh. How about Alderman Schoenmaker? Will you take that microphone and put it, yeah, to your side? It can't go on the other side?
No. Everything.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's as far as you can go.
We'll try to be very...
Hey, Dave, I'll yell.
Can you hear now?
I figured you... I didn't have a problem hearing Waldron. Everybody here, Tim.
Can you hear Moyer? Alderman Moyer, will you say something, please?
Can you hear me?
I can now. How about you, Mike?
Yeah, now I can. I couldn't before.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Alderman Schoenmaker. We'll arrange it better for next meeting.
You can move that mic back, and then that's a call.
Okay. So are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we're going to go to the agenda items. Item number one, Oak Glen Electric Service Agreement. Tony Lodi will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Your Honor. For your consideration, tonight is a resolution to provide electric service to the elevated water tank and the ground storage tank at Oak Glen. And if you recall, we acquired those two water tanks from Rock Island County by way of intergovernmental agreement in 2018. And so to establish, to reestablish them as part of our water system, one of the steps to that is to reestablish electric service there. And so we looked at the possibility of reusing the electric service that formerly served the nursing home there. We also looked at the possibility of using a generator temporarily until such time as the water services actually brought there. And then we also looked at extending, in a shorter way, single-phase electric service. And we believe the best alternative is to proceed forward with the three-phase service as proposed by Mid-American Energy, the exclusive electric provider, in the amount of $73,807.69.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter.
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Schoenmaker.
Was that contemplated at all when we took this on? You alluded to that a little bit, but I don't recall that. We were looking at this expense when we talked about it.
That is true. We did not anticipate the having to reestablish electric service. As it turns out, the nursing home when it was there had three-phase service. However, it was a configuration that's called delta no ground, and that is an obsolete configuration of service, and unfortunately, this cannot be reused.
Alderman Waldron.
Just want to say, good job getting the grant. Help cut down on the cost.
That was all, JD. Good job. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Question on the screen.
Alderman Went.
As I recall, I think that the county still has some activity happening out in this area. Will they benefit at all from this electrical hookup? Or is that just exclusively for us?
As it stands, this electric service is exclusively for us. The only thing I'm aware of that the county is doing is this P-25 radio project. And we did talk to them about the possibility of getting mutual benefit from this, but it just wouldn't work out, you know, for mutual gain.
Alderman Schoenmaker.
Have we done a cost analysis? And we believe that this is still the... We're adding a lot of money here that's not anticipated in the first round, and I don't know how long before we're really using this. Is it really worth proceeding now? Do we delay it and see what happens? I understand you have the grant.
The only way to establish water service up on that bluff is to provide elevated storage. And we studied that all the way back in the mid-'90s, and it was concluded that elevated storage was needed. Remember that this tank has already cleared all the FAA requirements to exist there in that proximity to the airport. And as it stands, when we did acquire it, it was considered to be an asset in excess of $600,000 at the time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. The next item is River Drive Interceptor Study. Tony Lodi.
Okay, Mayor. This one is a resolution to allow us to partner with Strand Associates. If you recall, back in 2009, the WPC Division was sided with a non-compliance advisory from the Illinois EPA for chronic overflows to the sanitary sewer system along River Drive. And we did some studying in the years following that and concluded that the best remedy to that problem was to first improve the wastewater treatment plant and to especially improve the headworks facility there. So there was significant investment in that, and now the wastewater treatment plant is has the pumping capacity to take on the wastewater that will flow to it in any wet weather event that we've seen so far. Previous to the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, the interceptor line would be used as storage until the wastewater plants pumping plant could catch up. So now that we've made these improvements, we, as you remember, last year we had some significant wet weather and had some overflows in the area just downstream from the 39th Street Pumping Station. And so now we want to, after making those investments at the treatment plant and then also making some significant investments in the interceptor, recontouring it down around I-74 to make way for the new bridge abutments and so forth, we need to study the, those improvements and simulate what weather will do in relation to the pumping at the 39th Street Lift Station and determine whether or not we can pump more water to the west toward the treatment plant without overflowing downstream in more developed and populated areas. So this partnership with Strand will do hydraulic analysis and a focused look at specifically at a couple of locations in the 34th Street area where we believe there's bottlenecks in the system to kind of simulate what improvements in those areas would do. So staff recommends approval of this partnership with Strand Associates in the amount of $67,800.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Waldron.
One of the focuses will be the inverted siphon.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, JD.
If you can hear me, also, yep, also there is a backwards Y that sits at the foot of 34th, and we're going to model that as well. And the other thing I want to tell everybody, I think you folks have heard me talk about this once before, is that as we're watching TIF 12, and I think TIF 12 may have some positive cash flow, and so I may come back to you in the future if you want to look at more TIF-eligible expenses in TIF 12. And we may want to take this, move this expense, and journal this over to TIF 12, and then possibly anything that comes out of this study that, improvements that need to be made to the interceptor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Went.
Regarding that, if we pay this out of this fund, would we then, can we then go back and take it out of that TIF? Or if it's a TIF-eligible expense, should we just do it now?
I'd say I'm going to look at Dirk. I'm comfortable with doing it either way. I know we recently had some property tax challenges and things going on in TIF 12, so I'd maybe want to, I'd want to walk through some of that with him, because I haven't talked to him specifically about that before, maybe next week, before this comes back on the council agenda, and maybe change that account before then.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
It would be eligible, whether there's funds to pay, the difference too.
There will not be an issue if there are funds available, though, to charge it at a later point, because it's a TIF-eligible expense. So it can be transferred over at a later time, Alderman Went, but I don't think they're in a position right now to assure us that it wouldn't go negative. Alderman Went.
And so that's why I asked. I mean, as far as cash flow, it could still be paid from our general fund or from this fund, but just with a note, like we've doing in TIF 7 or something like that. So if the TIF actually doesn't have cash reserves right now, we would do it how we've done it with other TIFs. Front it from the utility and then with a loan back.
Yeah.
So is that the way that we're approving it? That it would be set up as a loan from the general fund to the TIF?
From the utility, yeah.
Oh, sorry. From the utility, from the utility fund, the enterprise fund, to the TIF? Is that what the motion is?
Yes.
If, just add to it, if needed, because we don't know if it's needed. So it would be a loan if needed.
That is my motion, if needed.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those...
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. The next item is Project 1339 Video Detection System Installation. JD Schulte.
So this is mine, Your Honor. I'll feel more comfortable for you folks if I just walk to the podium so you can hear me, is that right?
Yes, please.
So if you recall, I came to you with a sole source purchase last month and talked about the detection equipment that we're going to be using for the road diet projects that are coming up for this construction season. I mentioned that evening that the installation of it wasn't necessarily specific to any certain proprietary agency, so we put this out for bid to have the installation done. And I'm going to recommend to you tonight that we enter into a contract with Davenport Electric Contract Company for $51,749.49. They were the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and that do the installation of those components.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went.
This is great. It looks like it is lower than, the total project is lower than what we had originally budgeted. What's the intent for the additional $35,000 or $37,000 in that? Will that also be used towards road diet improvements?
That would be my recommendation as we come back, you know, with the policy here in the very near future, that I would recommend we talk about using that to move forward on additional initiatives.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
That motion carries. Thank you, JD.
Thank you.
The next item is Update of CDBG Policies and Procedures, Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's see. We want to do four changes to our policies and procedures book. But first thing I need to make is a correction to the verbiage there. On the third line, it says renewal. That should say removal. So correction to what we're asking you guys to approve tonight. Along with that, we want to remove the need for recapture agreements from our Community Housing Service Program, our Critical Assistance Program, and our Lead Hazard Control Program that's funded under CDBG. And a couple of reasons for that. We feel like we're penalizing the homeowner. If they come to us and if they need a roof or if they need a water heater, that's an investment into the property. If they want to sell that house in two years, they shouldn't be penalized to pay back that $3,000 for that roof. So we took that suggestion, the CACUP. CACUP approved that, so now we're bringing it forward to you guys. So it's just for those programs. And please know on our other lead grant that I'm going to talk about tonight, we don't have recaptures in that one either. We did not write that into the grant. Again, we don't want to penalize them. Previously, it was a three-year recapture. And on this one currently, right now, for any funding that's been received up until this point, it's a five-year recapture, and up to $10,000 that they receive. So that's the first item. The second item is, to address the homelessness, we want to create two new programs, one being our Down Payment and Closing Cost Assistance Program. We would like to offer up to $5,000. The homeowner would put in 500 of their own dollars, and then they would be required to take the home buying class. The second program to address the homelessness is a rental assistance program. We would assist you with your rent and your utility payment for water, one time for each in a calendar year. And then the fourth thing that we would like to update in our program, in our policy book is here, before environmental reviews were done on paper, now everything's electronically. And so we just updated our language to follow with HUD, CASF, the reviews there. And then one thing that we didn't put in the verbiage, but we're also recommending a change on, Alderman Parker had some concerns when we were hosting our meetings here at City Hall, and it was controlled in our policy that we had to do that. We removed that. So we're recommending approval of those changes to the policy book, other than some grammar cleanup.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Potter. Alderman Potter.
Approximately, how many times are people selling within that time span that you think are being penalized?
You wouldn't believe how many recapture agreements. I just bought merit one today. We probably are running anywhere from probably 20 to 40 a year. And then that money comes back into CDBG, and then we have to spend that money first before we can spend the program money. It helped last year when we were doing the landscape or florescente streetscape project, because we had all that money to throw to it. But when you don't have a large project like that in reserve, it kind of penalizes you to spend that money down for the timeliness.
Alderman Went.
Do we know of that 20 to 40, or whatever the number was, how much money that is a year in recapture?
Probably the average of them were about $4,000, $3,000 to $4,000. They're usually on the third year.
So if we had, I mean, we're talking well over $100,000 in recapture then, right?
It just kind of depends on the year, yes.
Alderman Went.
Yeah, I guess I have some concerns with this. It's, there's lots of programs out there where if you're getting a benefit to improve the home and make it more marketable to sell, and you wind up with the benefit of it, because most of these are required owner-occupied homes, correct?
Correct.
So then they turn around a year later and sell it, and it becomes a rental, they get the windfall and sell it to an investor, and I just, I've got some real concerns with eliminating this, because $100,000 a year could go, plus, could go a long way towards fixing sidewalks and repairing other home or owner-occupied homes within our census tracts that need it.
Alderman Berg.
I have some concerns as well. First, the recapture, we could take that money and recycle it for new homeowners, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then why...
Well, it has to go back into the program that it was paid out of, so it would go back into the rehab program. It wouldn't go into the home buyers program.
But KJ, what you're asking us now is just to forego this money. I mean, just, I mean, this is money that could be recycled again, and again, like Alderman Went said, I mean, they're getting an improvement on their home. I mean, especially as a Realtor, we see when these houses, you know, I mean, people aren't, they're staying typically beyond three years, so I'm not sure why you're, you know, why you want this waived, when it's not, it's not good.
What is your motive, KJ? Is just a bother with the paperwork, or...
I wouldn't say it bothered with the paperwork, but there is additional paperwork. It was a concern that was bought forward by some citizens. It was a concern that was bought by some of our other entitlement CDBG programs. They are moving away from it. So we started to see a trend there. So we bought it to our CACUP board, and so now we're bringing it to council.
Alderman Schoenmaker.
I agree. I wouldn't be willing to waive it. I could see maybe a case-by-case, you know, very, very, very rare, but grandma has to go to the nursing home, and the house isn't worth enough to pay us off. We'll take up to whatever the, you know, whatever the real value is, and if that means we have to waive a couple thousand dollars, maybe that'd be a case-by-case where I would say we'd do that, but I can't see waiving it.
Okay. Do you want to offer an amendment? So we've got these three. They aren't all recapture.
No.
Right.
The down payment closing costs would be a recapture there, because if you're buying a house and we're providing $5,000 to you, we want that five-year recapture, because you're benefiting from that down payment. We're, on the other hand, on the rehab, on the flip side of the coin, every house needs a roof. We'd rather take care of that eyesore with you, and then have you benefit. If I move out, someone moves in, it's still a good roof, you know? As a good neighbor, I would want to see my neighbor have a good roof and not be penalized for it.
Alderman Potter.
I appreciate those comments, but I'm wondering if there's money that can be, can be reprogrammed into the rehabilitation part, then I'm assuming that there's other parts of the CDBG funds that can be moved to pay for other things. In other words, you're saying, you know, we could expand other programs.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering why, if we have a history of this and we know approximately what it costs, why aren't we figuring that into the, into how we're, how much money we're putting into that rehab program? If we're seeing, you know, $20,000 a year in recapture, then that should be part of the methodology figuring out how much we need annually in that, in that particular program, and then it would thereby free up other monies for other programs. And I get, and secondly, just second onto that is, do we have, is there a timeframe in terms of what, how this needs to be done, or is this just an internal thing that you could go back to CACUP and have this discussion? Again, we're under no timeframe from HUD to do any of this, correct? At the moment?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, we have a CACUP meeting tomorrow, so...
Well, and CACUP doesn't have the authority over us, and so...
No, they made the recommendation.
Yeah, the motion in front of us. I would entertain an amendment, or I'd like to move forward with the vote. Alderman Berg.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we do it on a case-by-case, that we bring it...
What authority, though?
To that, that's exactly, to the, I mean, the authority of the council. Do you agree?
I don't, I don't think I want to entertain every recapture, because there's 20 a year.
Okay.
But, but, I mean, you can make the motion. I just wouldn't be supportive of that.
Well, no, I would, I would, to the, to the, to the manager. I mean, you're the housing manager, correct, or...
Correct. Can I make this motion? Maybe we set a threshold. If it's, say, under a certain dollar amount, we can forgive it, but if it's over a certain dollar amount, we want to move forward and have them pay it back. Can we set that dollar amount, either 500 or $1,000?
Alderman Went.
I think, I will make a motion that we strike the, this provision from, I think Alderman Schoenmaker's original motion. Was that you, Kevin?
Alderman Moyer, I think.
Alderman Moyer's original emotion, and as part of it, ask staff to come back to us with a recommendation on how to change this differently moving forward.
Is that just for the recaptures?
For the recapture, for all of the recaptures.
Item one, okay.
Okay. So your motion is to withdraw the consideration for the recaptures from this motion? That's your amendment?
Yes.
So what would we be proceeding on to vote if we accepted that amendment? What else is on the table? Isn't it all recaptures?
No, the other ones, to introduce two new programs, the CDBG Down Payment and Closing Cost Assistance Program, and then the Rent and Utility Assistance Program, and then to accept the verbiage on HEROES, which is the new electronic environmental review procedures from HUD, and then to accept the fact that we do not have to have our meetings for CACUP, our public meetings for CDBG at City Hall.
Okay. I have one clarification. On the homeowner down payment...
Okay.
Does that strike the provision for recapture? There's no recapture on that? They just get it and we walk away?
No, on the home buyers, we wrote it in.
That it would have a recapture?
That it would have a recapture.
Okay.
I'm second Alderman Went's motion.
Alderman Went provides a motion to strike the recapture component, the first part of the three-part proposal.
And that would be for the CHS, the CAP, and the CDBG Lead Hazard.
Thank you. A second, sorry, Alderman Went.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is to strike that from this motion, which was to remove it. So what we want it to happen is for that recapture to stay in place.
Yes. We have a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on that amendment? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The amendment carries. We are not considering an amended motion on the floor. Alderman Went.
Would it be possible, because it sounds like we're voting on about five different things still, that we break up this motion and vote on each one of those items individually? Because I'm not 100% clear on all of the things we're voting for, still.
Can you, I, there's a motion on the floor, and so I think that we would have to amend the motion on the floor or vote to decline the motion on the floor and then address them individually. I think that would be the best method, so I would be open to that. Do you want to vote to decline to break it apart, or do you want to move forward with the...
I'd like to make the motion to decline, so that way we can understand it, because I'm a little lost now, too.
So what would happen is we would vote against the motion that's on the floor. Does everyone understand that? We're going to vote against the motion that's on the floor, the amended motion on the floor, and then we can address the individual items, okay? All those in favor of the motion on the floor that is amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I believe we have two aye votes. Is that right? Alderman Waldron and Alderman Potter. All those, all those against, please indicate by saying nay.
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 We have, one, two, three, we have six nay votes, so that motion fails. So if you'd like to propose them individually, you're welcome to do that. So if you'd like to propose them individually, you're welcome to do that.
Okay. The first item is to introduce a new program called the CDBG Down Payment and Closing Costs Assistance Program. Basically, we would provide up to $5,000 and a recapture to a home buyer buying a house in the city of Moline. They would have to put $500 in and attend a home buying course.
Well, we get a motion.
Does anyone want to make a motion to support that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Berg?
So as I, we are going to be requiring them to take a class that's a HUD approved.
Yes.
Do we have a HUD approved instructor here at this, at the city?
No, typically we send them over to Growth.
Okay, are we charged a fee for that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Second on that is you're asking for pay reasonable closing costs. Some of these FHA buyers typically ask for the closing costs to be, to wrap it up in the loan. Or they, I'm sorry, they ask for the seller to pay for their closing costs. So I don't know if that's something that you might want to consider as to not paying, to asking them to pay the reasonable closing costs. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, that makes sense. That's the reason we wrote it in, closing costs or down payment.
Right, but your bullet point number two says pay reasonable closing costs.
Oh, you're right.
And down, down below, then it says the 500 towards the down payment and/or closing costs.
Oh, we can certainly clean up that language.
Okay. And then can I ask you another question, Mayor? And then also, so they're only, you're, we're only requiring them to put 500 towards the total transaction?
That's the minimum.
Okay, that they can put it, okay, gotcha.
To be approved for our program, I don't know what their lender is going to require from them.
Is there a reason why it's not $1,000? Typically, they're $1,000.
On our previous home buying program, we used 500. But I, I mean, we're open to suggestions.
Well, it's just, and again, you know, homeownership isn't for everyone. Granted, we would like to see as many home buyers as we can have in the city of Moline, but you know, also the financial literacy, the education of them becoming homeowners, that's again why I asked for the, you know, the hours that we needed by the HUD approved counselor. But it just, you know, $1,000 is what they, you know, typically need. You know, it's going to, you know, be their earnest money, the five, you know, typically 500 for their earnest money, their 400 for their inspections, you know, 400 for their appraisals. I mean, so they're going to have to have at least, you know, $1,000 into the transaction.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Well, I think it's just a matter of cleaning up the program eligibility.
No, it's 500.
Okay, so can we?
It's in the.
Okay. Can we modify that to be $1,000?
We have a motion to amend by Alderman Berg. Is there a second? The amendment fails for, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Alderman Schoonmaker. So now we're considering the amendment of transitioning from a $500 contribution from the homeowner to $1,000 minimum? Any discussion on that? All those in favor, oh, sorry, Alderman Witt?
KJ, how, how does this compare to the program that Growth runs? And is this means tested program?
Oh, I'm not sure how it compares to the program that Growth runs. Does Growth still have a home buying program?
They do, and actually, I was just, I'm actually on their website right now that they have to sign up for the eight hour, which we didn't put that down that is an eight hour. You just put it by a HUD approved counselor because some of those can be done online and they're, they can be done in an hour. So they actually have an eight-hour home buyer education for their, for their home buyers. But yeah, they still do have a home buyer program. And I believe it's $1,000 for theirs.
Okay.
And is it means tested?
No. We just looked at what other jurisdictions have in their program and tried to come up with a program for us.
So the amendment that we have on the floor is converting from 500 to 1,000? Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries with one nay vote from Alderman Moyer. So now we're considering an amended motion on the floor that would have the buyer's contribution at minimum of $1,000. Is there any more discussion on this program? All those in favor, please indicate. Oh, Alderman Witt?
I'm sorry. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I would like before, because this is just coming out of COW, that this will come back on the, will this come back on the council agenda? When you create the program?
Yes.
Okay, when we do that, I just ask that you come back with kind of a comparison to how Rock Island runs their similar program.
Okay.
Alderman Berg?
Yeah, and I'm actually on the live work program right now. It is a home buyer must contribute a minimum of $1,000 to the transaction. Home buyer must sign a five-year forgivable recapture on this. So I'm, I mean, we, I think I didn't flip real quick, but we do have the five-year recapture on that one as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
And we're assuming from our standpoint, the five-year recapture is not prorated for this program. For the CHS and the CAP and the lead hazard under CDBG, it's a proration. With IDA as well as this program, it's all or none. So if you buy the house today and you flip it tomorrow, you pay us back 5,000.
Okay, but if you buy it today, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Berg?
If you buy it today and you sell it in three years, your circumstance changes and you sell it in three years, you still, we still have them pay the whole 5,000?
That's the proposal for this program.
Okay, but why are we not prorating it the way the other programs typically are done? Where they forgive after so many, each month is forgiven at one, 1/20, I believe, or one?
For the IDA programs currently that we have, it's a, it's a full recapture. There's nothing that's prorated. And so we follow those footsteps. But I mean, if you guys would like proration, we're open to proration, so.
I mean, typically, I mean, I don't know. I mean, does anyone else have an opinion on that? But typically, I've seen them where they're, they were forgiving them every month or monthly forgiven.
So IDA's guidelines are to not forgive?
For a single family program, it's all or nothing. It's not prorated.
Certain programs.
Yeah, certain programs, it depends on the policy.
Right.
That they like. So they kind of have a mixture, just like we have a mixture here in our city. So there's not necessarily one standard. It's kind of what fits. So whatever the council would like.
Alderman Berg?
And I just feel, I mean, and especially with these buyers purchasing that, this 5,000 that we're going to give them, that, you know, they're putting, you know, they're making an investment in this, so why penalize them after living there for five years? If their circumstance changes and they want to buy a bigger and better house, you know, why are we not prorating that after, on a monthly, rather than, you know, sticking that to them, you know, after?
So we would entertain an amendment if you'd like to?
I'm not going to have the support. I will make a motion that we change the guidelines to, that we're going to do this forgivable, the five-year, it's forgiven after five years and it's prorated on a monthly basis.
We have a motion for amendment by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer to introduce the idea of proration on this recapture. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of that amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That amendment carries. So now we have an amended motion on the floor for this program that introduces the idea of 500 to 1,000, so it's now 1,000. And the recapture would be prorated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the program, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And then the third one?
My next one would be to introduce the Rent and Utility Assistance Program. We would provide assistance to a low and moderate income individual, our family who has a signed lease for a location. For a location here in Moline. It's a one-time use for rent and a one-time use for utility. And the only utility that we would provide assistance to is gas and electric because we don't want to pay ourselves for the water. So it's a one-time use in a 12-month calendar period, January through December. And they would have to qualify based on their income.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any, is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Witt?
And I apologize, how does this compare to like Project Now's program? Are we duplicating or overlapping programs where they come to us for one month and then go to Project Now for a month and then go someplace else for another month?
I'm not aware that Project Now has one. I know Salvation Army has a program.
Salvation Army as well, yeah.
So when we put this program in there, that particular year Salvation Army did not apply to us for funds. They were going through some transition over there. Think it's an important program to have. We get a copy of those records from Salvation Army. So I mean, if there's any duplication, we can certainly communicate with them on that. At Salvation Army, you can have the use of the program up to three times. In our program, we limited it at one. And again, both of these programs are, because Moline does not have a homeless shelter. Davenport and Rock Island has those means. We don't have those means here in Moline. So we're trying to develop programs that's going to help prevent homelessness.
Alderman Potter?
On page 14, under program overview, it says may assist up to two rental assistance payments and two utility payments.
That was an error. And then it should be one. Apologize for that. We can certainly take care of that and strike that to one.
Thank you.
Alderman Berg?
KJ, I certainly appreciate what you, the work you've done on this. And I think, I mean, and Mike, or I'm sorry, Alderman Witt, we, as far as I do know, Project Now does have that rental assistance program as well. And, you know, I mean, yeah, it's great to, you know, cross-reference. If someone needs it, if the need's there and they need it in January, they need it again in, you know, February, and they get one, you know, one from us and one from them, then it, you know, obviously they needed it. So, but Project Now, I don't, I don't know if you, if you necessarily want to, you know, check their records too. I just feel that, you know, that they need it, they need it.
Yeah, the thing about Project Now and some of these programs, you know, some of this information is protected. They can't come and say, you know, KJ helped last month, you know?
Right.
If you're not in the circle of the CDBG money.
Right.
I don't know what their funding source is over at Project Now. I don't know if that's private money or if it's another grant program that they have. I'm not sure of their funding source. But I mean, you know, we've been trying to communicate as much as we have, can to avoid any scamming in these programs.
Can we, instead of managing the program directly with the renter, can we flow our cash through Project Now? So have all the applications flow through Project Now and then we would supplement their funds for Moline renters?
They would be considered a subrecipient and they would have to apply for the program.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Berg?
I was just going to state, I mean, especially, you know, that, that program over there, because I previously served on the board, was, it's not as well-known. I think Alderman Witt's aware of it because he's a landlord. But I think, you know, with you promoting it down here through the city, the city, you know, I think that people know where to go for help.
Alderman Witt?
My concern still is this duplication and multiple areas, providing these funds and, and we have limited resources and we want to make sure that they go to those that are the most in need. And so I'd really like for us to talk with Salvation Army, Project Now, and really have a good understanding of what they're providing and what we're providing and how that can be coordinated to best utilize those funds. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this for two weeks or for two meetings to give KJ time to talk with them and come back with a report or some kind of way to move forward in conjunction with those, those other programs that are available.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Waldron. So we have a motion to table for two weeks by Alderman Witt and a second by Alderman Waldron. I don't think we can do discussion on a table motion. Is that correct, Dirk?
Correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of tabling this motion for two weeks, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion to table carries with one nay vote from Alderman Schoonmaker. Is that all of them, KJ?
No, we still have a few more. The next one is to accept.
Let's start, now they like multiply.
Yeah, accept the language for the environmental reviews. Instead of doing them on paper, we're doing them electronically per HUD's guidance.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Schoonmaker, a second by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries.
And the last one that I have for you guys today is the removal to hold our citizen participation meetings and our CACUP meetings over in the COW. We can have them anywhere in Moline. That's accessible.
So, motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
May I ask a question just so I understand this? On the Rent and Utility Program that's tabled for two weeks, you guys want me to come?
Two meetings.
Two meetings, I'm sorry.
Two meetings.
Okay. You guys want me to come back and talk about the comparison to other similar programs?
Yeah, I think we're looking for if it complements or if it duplicates other programs in the community.
And can we coordinate?
And then on the, the first motion to remove the recaptures, do you guys want me to come back with an amendment or just leave that alone? On the recaptures for the Community Housing Services, the CAP program, which is our Critical Assistance Program and then our CDBG-led program. Is that one off the table or do you guys want some further information for amendment on that?
I, I think that the recaptures stay in place as they have been.
Okay.
Is there any, any consideration by any of the council members to do anything different? Or do we want the recaptures? Alderman Potter?
I just, in the, in the short run, I don't have a problem with keeping that the way it is. I, I think it would be interesting if, since we're looking at this for another couple weeks, to investigate whether or not there are other agencies in the area that do means testing for this sort of thing. I think that would be useful information.
And you're talking about means testing for the homeowner buy? Okay. But the recapture, everybody wants it to stay the way it is. So recaptures are in place as they have been in the past, please.
Okay, and then the home buyers program pass $1,000 in prorated recapture.
Yeah, and I think Alderman Potter would like a little bit more information about the means test on that one. So the next time it comes forward, we could give it just a little bit more information. Alderman Berg?
On the, the rental assistance program that you're going to, you know, that you're going to, and I didn't see this in there, but maybe perhaps as you're cleaning that up, participants attending the tenants' rights and responsibilities class?
Yeah, that would be a one-on-one with staff.
With our staff here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have one other this evening before we go to the informationals, please. Are, are you're done with this part, right? And you're going to present the informational moment?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to go to another. Dirk, would you please present the other this evening?
Sure. Good evening. This evening's other concerns a number of issues related to the current public health crisis that's, you know, impacting the world and including the Moline community in this. So there are a number of things we wanna bring forward. Our intent is to get some consensus and direction from you today in the other. And then we would bring back resolutions with sunset clauses on them for the duration of the emergency. You know, sort of initiating these policy changes and directives for the duration of the emergency. So as you know, the governor's declared a state of emergency and there are powers that exist already on the book for the mayor to declare one, though she has not done that yet. The goal here is that we don't think anything here is sufficiently urgent that we would need to declare an emergency to impose them by order. So that's why we're seeking council's direction tonight under an other. I'll begin with the first one, which is city services of fees and shut-offs for utility services. And I'll start with the residential. We'd like to bring back a policy initiative that says for water, sewer, garbage, recycling and stormwater. And we're not gonna per se advertise this, but what we're gonna do internally is adopt a policy that says during the duration of this emergency, we're not gonna do disconnects. We're not gonna impose late fees. And then, and again, because it's quarterly billing, if they miss, if it's one bill or two bills that are missed, we would then adopt a repayment program that over the next couple of bills, they would have to repay the past due amounts. And then we would start imposing late fees and so on. So we'd break up the past due amount. This way, we try and give people a bit of a runway. We're not gonna be disconnecting things. The governor is already encouraging the ICC for all private utilities, Commonwealth and NICOR, Mid-American, all of them, to do the same thing. That we're not gonna have disconnects, shut-offs, we're not gonna impose late fees and that there'll be a, a payment program initiated to catch up. So that's the first one on residential. I know you've been breaking things up, so I'm hesitant to go on. Are you okay on that?
So the direction from council, what we're basically saying is in the interim, before we do a formal resolution directing staff to not execute fees, fines and shut-offs for residential.
Again, with sunset and we would have the repayment and all the other obligations kicking back in over a period of time at the end of the declared emergency.
Do you need a motion for that direction?
I just need consensus today.
All right. Do we have consensus for that action?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna proceed and then there'll be a more formal thing that'll come on the agenda next week.
On the business side, thank you. On the business side, same thing for businesses on their utilities. And that's, you know, water, sewer, garbage, recycling, stormwater. We'll do the same thing on their bills, same policy. Again, not advertising, it'll just be an internal matter. For a subset of businesses, the bars and restaurants, a couple of other things. Bars and restaurants are up against presently renewal of their hazmat licenses and their food and beverage licenses. And they, you know, in October, they did their liquor licenses. The proposal that we'd like to bring forward after consultation with the mayor is that license fees that are now due are not gonna be collected until after the emergency is over, because these businesses are closed. And that we're gonna give them the opportunity to pay that over time and we would prorate them. So if they're closed, say, two months of the year, they would pay ten-twelfths of the license fee. And that would be similar for the renewal of the liquor license in the next October. Whatever the closure period is that's been mandated for the good of the public, we would then prorate their license fee for all three, liquor, hazmat and food and beverage. And that we wouldn't collect it right away. We would give them time to pay it over time because they need to get back up and running. If you're faced with this daunting initial big payment right away, we're fearful that they'll just close their doors as opposed to trying to hang on and stay. So by getting a little bit back over time, that's the goal. So that's the first thing, is the, the license fees would be collected after the emergency's over, prorated with a payment plan probably over four months, twenty-five percent of the back charge over four months. I like it.
What's the consensus? Consensus good?
Do it.
You have our support.
This is one that we are gonna put in a letter to those businesses. This is one of the ones we're gonna trumpet, that this is what Moline's doing for its community. So that's what's gonna happen there. One more thing on the food and beverage folks. The state of Illinois, the governor has already called upon them to do it, so it's gonna be coming. But, you know, we send out those food and beverage tax letters that if they haven't paid, they're closed. Well, they're, they're not getting any revenue, so we would do the same thing. Would follow either the state's lead about how that gets collected down the road. They, they owe taxes now, but we're not going to insist that they do or revoke any licenses because they haven't paid their taxes. And we'd give them a little bit of time to catch up on that similarly. So I just, that's the last part of the subset of things we wanna do for food and beverage.
Everybody comfortable with that? Good.
And one more thing for the food and beverage folks. As you know, the restaurants have had to go to carryout only. Some are offering curbside and some have contacted us to say, hey, when I'm open to do curbside, can I have the two spaces in front of me go to a fifteen-minute parking thing on the street so that I can get cars to come there, get curbside and leave? And so what we would propose is that during the term of the emergency, when, you know, dining, consumption is prohibited, we would allow the restaurant to put up a sign that says fifteen-minute parking. You know, if they're not open on a Sunday morning, we don't care. But when they're open and they wanna do curbside business, they would allow, be allowed to sign it for fifteen-minute parking during the duration of this emergency, up to two spots. And again, only during the duration.
So do you have a visual of that? It'd be like their little, little signs.
We're not paying for signs.
Do you call them sandwich boards? I don't know what they call those, but they would place those out there to mark and then we would, we would allow that.
It's just a courtesy, though. They're not, there's no enforcement of that. It's asking people to be courteous.
It's more of a signage. I mean, if it resulted in a breach of the peace, I'd imagine we would call the police department. But I don't imagine it's gonna be like people fighting over shoveled-out snow parking spots.
Alderman Potter.
And the sign will only be out there while the business is operating.
Correct.
Which would be a helpful indicator because you can't really tell who's, who's offering the service or when. Like our restaurant Cafe Fresh, they have some pretty restricted hours that they're doing it. But you wouldn't be able to tell until you got right up on the business that they were doing it. So I think it's helpful. So the council is, Alderman Went?
Yeah, well, we provide like the, what that sign will look like and then they can print it off or whatever. Or we get, or some guidance on, so there's some consistency on what that looks like. Or are they just gonna, whatever they put up is?
I'll build language into the resolution about what they can say on the sign. It's fifteen minutes.
Okay. I, I think it'd be great if we had like a template that we could put on, that they could download or whatever. And we've got a.
I'd like to allow them to be able to use their little, like, some of them have chalkboard signs that are kind of a nice look. I think that would be okay to allow, as long as the wording is right.
I'm, I'm not saying that they can't use their own. I'm just saying, give them something that could be easy for them. Just download it and.
Sure. Alderman.
How, I know that JD has a, or Ratchik has a department that does signage. I don't know what the cost, what that kind of cost would look like for us to make. I don't know, fifty, I mean, however we need right now. I mean, how many restaurants do we have in the city?
We're trying to avoid that cost, though.
Costs.
Okay.
This is temporary.
Yeah, and we're not sure each restaurant needs it, but for those who wanna do curbside, you know, the governor allows you to order, go in, stand for a few minutes inside if it was cold or rainy. He's not allowed to consume on premises, so not everybody's gonna need it. But we want, for those who do, we'd like to be able to help.
So you have the council's support on that.
Okay. Matter of, I wanted to bring forward some things where, in terms of managing services being delivered, there are three services we want to put on hiatus during the, the term of the emergency. The first is hazmat inspections, as the mayor pointed out and as JD's pointed out to me. This is our firefighting force and ambulance drivers. And we need to, if we could put them in bubble wrap, we would, as the mayor said, but we can't. So to stop, you know, the hazmat inspections, we can put those in abeyance until the emergency is over. Keep our forces sequestered as possible while they need to provide services. So that's one. The second is that we're not gonna send, your approval, we're not gonna send anybody inside of houses to do meter readings for a while. That's, you know, occasionally we've had to do that to fix something. We're gonna put that in abeyance during the, during the emergency so that there's less contact that way. And then the last one would be code enforcement. Howman rarely goes inside, but occasionally does. And the subset of those where he does have to go inside and do an inspection, one subset is not emergency or urgency related for life safety. If life safety's involved, there's a police call, a fire call, and Brad has to go out and determine whether it's habitable or not and assist in that, that'll still go on. But the other sort of inspection, looking to follow up on Grant, we're gonna put that in abeyance too. Fewer interactions until the emergency's over. So if I've got your consensus on those three, we'll build that in.
Any comments from the council? Are you all supportive of that?
Yes. Keep it safe.
Okay.
All right. Next thing, speaking of services and abeyance. So the general direction to JD and from JD to staff and from the mayor has been, you know, we work collaboratively with our neighbors. Well, some of our neighbors are closing City Hall. Some of our neighbors are closing other facilities. We here have closed the library and park programs are on suspension until early April. However, we wanted to clear this with you. JD's not recommending, if I can speak for you JD, and I'm not recommending that we close City Hall either. And that's the legal advice we give all of our clients, is not to close your administrative offices. People, you're on the front line. People are looking to you for help. And City Hall needs, we're recommending, needs to be open to facilitate the delivery of those services to the extent possible. We will be working on, as the solution, as the situation ever evolves, possible working-from-home things for people that makes sense. And you've heard that the governor's considering closing all businesses. Well, we're not a business. I mean, we use business principles, but always accepted from those things are essential public service employees. And so while we'll be working on trying to find ways for people to work from home, to comply with guidance from the CDC and the governor and all the rest, we're not encouraging closing City Hall. So we wanted to bring that to your attention. That the library is closed, but the library is promoting, just so you know, different things they're trying to do. Curbside delivery of books for people who pull up and they'll, they'll get them. They're gonna have some prepackaged by age group. They'll continue to deliver through mail to people who would like them, particularly our seniors who are feeling homebound. That's one way they can get action. And they're looking at posting some videos on YouTube, on Facebook, of their personnel doing things. Same for parks. Programs are shut down, but we're continuing to do some work. And while rentals are also being rescheduled into April, they're looking at a whole bunch of things on, on the website about, that they're sending out about things you can do at home during this time, a whole bunch of activities. Everything from, you know, home scavenger hunts to some exercise programs. And so while they're closed, they're actually reaching out to the community to work on things. So unless there's an outcry, we're not anticipating closing City Hall, even though some of our neighbors have. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Last, in all of this, I wanted to preview something that's on the city council agenda because we haven't had a chance to talk about it because of how nuts things are. So you have on your books already the emergency powers. Those are under a certain section in the municipal code, largely designed for civil unrest and war. There's a separate section in the only health code that gives additional powers to the mayor that we haven't adopted for a public health emergency. And so what I've attempted to do there is tweak the ordinance to include those powers related to public health emergencies. The mayor has not declared a state of emergency yet. She hasn't had to do that. But that's what that's about, is trying to pick up the Public Health Act powers that the mayor might have on, in terms of orders available if needed to be done. And remember, any order issued by the mayor after she would declare a state of emergency sunsets at the very next council meeting. You would have to decide whether to continue her orders or place them or to void them. So they, they don't go on for long. It's just one of those things that's in the background, particularly since we're having difficulty sometimes in different communities getting a quorum together to meet and actually take care of business. While the governor did sign the order, issue an executive order that allows remote participation, he cited a statute that really replies to the state and its agencies, not local government. So we're not keen about using that if we can avoid it for anything that's not routine. So just to have that in the background, to be prepared, that's why I tweaked it for you and I brought that forward. So unless you have questions about that, I know we haven't had a chance to talk about it. But that's, you'll see that on the council agenda later. Okay. I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Dirk. We'll now go into the informationalists. Our first informational this evening is lead-based paint hazard reduction program update. KJ?
Hi, Goodie.
Hello.
Okay, I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk to you guys about the lead grant. We've had it for about a year now. Just kinda give you an update of where we're at. So, and I provided hard copies of the slides there in your packet. So back in December of 2018, we were awarded a $2.4 million lead grant. And as you know, in December of 2018, the government shut down. So technically, we did not get our grant until April 1st of 2019. So we're just getting ready to finish up our fourth quarter with the grant, coming up over a year. Of that grant, we have $2,240,000 for lead services and $160,000 for Healthy Homes Initiative. What the Healthy Homes Initiative is, after we come in your house and we take care of the lead hazards, we can come back in, say you have a tripping hazard, say you need a furnace. We don't do roofs. Say you need some plumbing work, some electrical work. We, you can come back and provide up to $5,000 of service for that. Anything over $5,000, HUD has to approve. Just like in the lead grant, anything over $20,000, HUD has to approve. They have approved every case, because our bids are coming in exceptionally high right now. They have approved every case but one. And then that homeowner was able to contribute those, I think it was about $2,000 that she had to contribute. So it's about a $22,000 project for that. The grant is for forty-two months, the period of performance known as POP. And the target areas are Silvis, Moline, East Moline and Rock Island. At any time, if you guys got questions, please ask them. So how they write you in the lead grant? They do it on a quarterly report card. So every three months, I submit a quarterly report. And then our general tech rep will send the mayor email, as well as myself, telling us if we're in the green, which is good. The yellow, you're moving, but you should get closer to the green. And the red, you're missing some things. So every quarter, we're graded on three things. One is our assessments and evaluations, which is basically our LIRAs. And LIRAs are lead inspections, risk assessments. So as a risk assessor, I'm one. And then we have another gentleman by the name of Drake Daly, who's one. We took him from Rock Island about nine months ago. But on a lead inspection, the difference is when an inspector goes in to do a lead inspection, we're looking to see if there's lead paint. When we're doing the risk assessment, we're looking to see if there's a hazard. So on the wall where that door handle was hitting, there might be lead paint on that wall. But is there a hazard? Is there any friction on that surface? That's what we're looking for. We're looking to see if you still have aluminum windows. That's a great sign that there's lead in that house still, if you haven't moved to vinyl. So we're, we're graded on those, but we can't do lead inspections and risk assessments until we have applications. But these are the three criterias that are graded every quarter for us. And then on the next one is units completed. So after we get in there and do that lead inspection, risk assessment, we write up a scope of work that we put out for bid. Currently, right now, we have three contractors. Three months ago, we had two contractors, so we are moving with that number. One of the problems that we're facing there is that the city of Galesburg also has this grant. The city of Peoria has this grant. Kankakee has this grant. So Kankakee gets a lot of contractors to come down from Chicago. And Galesburg, we're using one common contractor between us. And then they have two that come down from Chicago as well. All three of our contractors, one comes from Kiwanee and then two are, one comes from Peoria and another one is local here. We are desperately trying to get more contractors, but it's a very tight field right now. Who wants to work in lead? Even though there's still a need for it, there's not a lot of contractors who wanna deal with it because of all the regulations that are out there. And then the third thing that we're graded on is our LOX drawdown. So when we go out and spend money, we need to be reimbursed by the government. And so when we submitted this grant, we said, okay, these are our benchmarks. Every quarter, we will do A, B and C, A, B and C. Then when we got the grant in December, you know, you hit the winter months, so you're not doing anything because you can't get that food, that full clearance. So we can go in and install windows at any time of the year. But to paint the outside, it has to be certain conditions. We're currently starting to paint all those projects that got stalled in the wintertime. Now we can come out and do those. So those are the three things. So that's the reason you see the stoplight there. Green, you're good. Yellow, you're okay. Red, you have some concerns. Currently, there's about over 300 lead grants with HUD. And they all come out at different years, so they're overlapping. And every one of them have a different NOFA. And a NOFA is a notice of funding availability. So we all don't have the same rules that we have to follow in each one. Similar, but not the same. Some of our strengths and weaknesses in our last quarter report, which ended on December 31st, we got in January. Again, I'm getting ready to submit a quarterly report that's ending in March. And we'll get that report card the following month. But we were okay on our LOX drawdowns and we were okay on our assessments and evaluations. Luckily for us, myself and Drake, we have been involved in two other lead grants. So we're kind of familiar. But then we bought in some new people like Tara, who does our ELOX. And then we just hired an assistant who helps me on the environmentals and what. So when you come in and you do the lead worker training and you do the lead supervisor training, it's either three days or four days. We headed over at the police department. From that training, you have to go take a third-party test. You get three times to pass that test. And a few passed, but now they don't want to become contractors because of all the regulations out there. A few are still trying to pass, and a few just haven't taken the test. They don't want to take the challenge. But we did provide the training out of the grant, which was free to them, and just trying to encourage to get more contractors. But we're not where we want it to be, want to be. When we had this grant last time, we had six contractors. So I mean, we were moving. Now we really have a need for contractors. Our typical time in a house is about two weeks. So you figure if you only have three contractors and you're competing with other cities, you don't have a lot of contractors to move your projects.
Is most of the work windows, or is it all kinds of things?
I would probably say 75% to 80% are windows.
So the casings too?
Mm-hmm. So I mean, and then the rest is some minor painting, doors, trim, so. And then soil. So we find lead in soil. Remember in the 70s when you had your leaded gasoline and the fumes went into the soil and you had people planting gardens out there now? We have to do something with the soil. So normally, we're going to dig up a portion of it, put down new soil for you, and then probably top it off with...
Mulch.
Mulch, yeah, thank you. Thank you. So another thing is our marketing. We've been on WQAD. I just did Channel 4 last week, Living Local. We have the shirts that we wear to get people's attention. We go to health fairs, we go to daycares, we go to kindergarten classes, we go to churches. We're trying to get people in and get more applications. Again, this is just not Moline, it's Moline, Rock Island, Silvis, and East Moline. On our weaknesses, we didn't have enough units cleared, because again, we hit that winter month time where you can't finish up that winter painting. So that stalled those units from being counted. We're having problems with SHIPPLE. And for those who don't know what SHIPPLE is, it's our state historical preservation office. In the city of Moline, we have an agreement with SHIPPLE where we can use a consultant to do our historical review and give us, okay, you're not affecting anything historical. But for Rock Island, Silvis, and East Moline, they don't have that, so we have to send it to the state. Technically, by statute, the state has 30 days. Sometimes it's been 45, 60 days, and I'm emailing them back. Then you want to get permission from HUD if you move forward, or you're going to be reimbursed this money if you move forward and just follow what's in the statute. So we did have a meeting with Dirk, and we are trying to discuss the matter with Rock Island, as well as other cities, to try to get an amendment to our agreement with them to see if we can take on that responsibility and allow SHIPPLE to allow us to do that. So we are working on that, because that stalls everything. It's easier for us to do a Moline unit, because we can get through the historical review faster and get that bid on the street faster. With Rock Island and Moline and Silvis, you cannot open up the bid until you have your environmental done. So if your environmental is being held up by the historical review, you're just doing an addendum online saying, okay, we're going to extend it two weeks. Extend it two weeks until we can get that reviewed.
KJ, what's the process that we went through to allow us to use a third-party contractor? Can they go through that process as well, and can you help facilitate that?
I asked Rock Island about that, because they have a qualified person on staff, and that individual says that they don't want to do it until Rock Island's willing to pay them to do it for that additional work. And then East Moline and Silvis, they just don't even have housing departments. That's the reason we bring them along in our grants, and I don't see a problem with East Moline.
Doesn't our third-party contractor get paid through the grant?
Yeah, they get paid through the grant.
So what would they care? It doesn't cost them anything extra?
Well, to have their person do it internally.
Well, why don't we just have the contractor do it for them?
Well, that's one thing that we have approached them about, to see if they want to give up that, I guess, that light, if you will, and we're still in discussion on that.
Okay.
Again, the need for contractors that I talked about, let's see, SHIPPLE, and one of the contractors that we have, he's in the middle of being investigated by the state. And in the three grants that we had, have had, none of our contractors have ever been audited. Well, there's a new person at the state, and not only is he auditing the contractor, there's another risk assessor over at Project Now who's also being audited. So every contractor's taking a step back and saying, hey, do I really want to work in this program right now? Basically, they're doing a six-year audit. They want you to pull your files for six years and send them to the state electronically. Unfortunately for this contractor, he probably didn't have the best record-keeping on the early years when he came into the program. So we had to go through all our files and pull those records, and we provided them to him electronically, and he just mailed them out to the state about two weeks ago. Another one of our three contractors, he was on a job site, and state showed up just randomly. They'll show up randomly, and as a result, the thickness of the plastic was an issue and something else was an issue, and they received a couple thousand dollars in fines. So a few of the contractors are taking a step back and trying to evaluate whether they want to continue or not in the program, which will hurt us tremendously, because we need to make numbers. So those are a few of the strengths and weaknesses that we're facing right now. The reason that I included this map and that I gave you a larger size of this map as well, one of the marketing efforts that I'm going to roll out here in the next couple of weeks, these are low to moderate census tracts up here, for Rock Island, East Moline, Silvis, and Moline. These are people who have a house that's less than $80,000. So we're going to try to knock on those doors. We're also going to send them a postcard, just tell them about our program. And now that it's spring, we're going to be traveling through those areas, door to door, just talking about our program and letting them know, if you have a child under the age of six who either lives here or visits here, please apply. We can help you out. Take a look at it. So that's the reason that map's included for you. And then I think the last slide. Moving forward, so we need to build our capacity for this grant, to continue to build it. Never be satisfied where we're at, because there's always something to build on. So then with that capacity, we need to look at the critical items. The program marketing, which is improving every day. Like I said, we have tried to do a lot with that, but we will continue to do more, to bring in the applicants, to get more contractors, and to get more staffing. And the reason the staffing's there, like I said, we bought Drake over from the city of Rock Island. City of Rock Island hired an individual. They went through the training, they went to go take the test, and then the next day, Rock Island let them go. So we do not have another risk assessor to help us out in getting these houses completed with the lead inspection risk assessment. I'm in discussion with Rock Island, they have put out for the position, but it has not been filled. So if they bring someone in and they don't have a risk assessor's license, then they're going to have to go through the class and take the test too. So that's the reason staffing's on there. And then the last thing, if we bring all this together, we'll get the LIRAs that we need, again, which are the lead inspections, risk assessments, we'll get the units completed, bring in along contractors, and we'll draw down the money from HUD, and then we'll have lead-safe, affordable units.
So isn't there, didn't we get a notice or something? There's something happening in the future regarding this status?
Yes, if we, you know, the seminar that I listened to yesterday, that one? Is that the one you're talking about?
No, I was talking about, I thought we got a notice for like an audit or something of the program.
Oh, that's for the CDVG program.
Oh, okay.
They're coming back to audit the 2016 records.
Okay, so that's completely set.
Yeah, that's completely.
So the...
They do that every couple of years, so.
The program handlers are concerned about our progress, or they're not? I missed, what ranking are we? Green, yellow, red?
The first quarter, we were green. The second quarter, we went to red, and that's the first time we've ever been red in three contracts, I mean, yeah, in three contracts with HUD. Currently, we're at yellow with them right now. So we've had every color, unfortunately.
Are there any questions?
How long does it take to get a contractor trained?
It's a week-long class, and then they can go take the third-party tests. You can take it in Peoria, Chicago, Springfield, and they offer it probably eight times a month. It's just a matter of if they want to travel.
Can we pay for their class?
And we've done that out of the grant. I have money available.
So if there's a contractor that's interested, we can compensate them, or just pay for the class?
We can pay for the class, and I can pay for them to register as a lead-baitment contractor, which is another 500. The class will run you about 800.
Can we pay their time?
I can't pay their time.
Okay.
Does, does just the general contractor have to be something? There's got to be one person, the workers don't have to be?
On every job site, you need to have a supervisor, which is a four-day class, and then the worker does not need to take the fourth day, they just take three days, and they don't have to take the third-party test as a worker. The supervisor, lead supervisor is responsible, or I guess, leading that crew, if you will.
So at least two people on every job site have to go through the training?
Yes, I mean, we had a contractor who was, he worked by himself. He did everything by himself, but he was a lead supervisor. He went through the training, but since he's retired.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman. I can't see your face. Is it Alderman Went?
Yes, sorry. KJ, too quick, is our biggest hurdle, we don't have enough applications, or the issue with the contractor?
I would say our biggest hurdle is the contractor, and we only have one person doing the lead inspections risk assessment. That's usually a two-day process, so by the time you go out, get your information, take your shots with the XRF gun, and then come back and write your report, on an easy one is probably a three-day total.
Can we, I know you can't out of the grant, pay or this contractor for their time, or to get them to do more than whatever. Can we, out of like the general fund, pay them, say, you do this if you do X amount of jobs in Moline through this program? I just feel like we've got this sack of money that we're desperate to spend to improve the housing stock in the city of Moline, and we can't get it spent. And it might be a good return on investment if we figure out some ways to increase the capacity for people to do work within the Moline city limit jobs.
Would that just be for Moline, or would that be for the coalition that exists over the Silvis and East Moline and Rock Island?
I think if we were subsidizing that particular contractor, then it would be within the city of Moline. If Rock Island wants to chip in on, out of their general fund, some subsidies to get these contractors, then we could partner and do it with both. But if we're going to take general fund or the residents of Moline's tax dollars to, I guess, leverage that to get more money for investments, I think that those should happen in the city of Moline. Is that possible?
Oh, I don't think you'd be able to control that person's ability to work in other communities, but you could maybe set it up that their time would be reimbursed if they did three jobs in Moline, or something like that, or else you pay for it with the expectation, a contract with them that they had to do three.
Well, we could pay like for their time and maybe even a, you know, a couple thousand bucks or something, but have basically a clawback says, you know, this is yours and it's forgivable if you do 10 jobs through this lead-based program in the city of Moline, we will then forgive, you know, you got to do it within a year time, and then we'll forgive that money we paid you.
So KJ, how about if we send you away with, we're looking to bring in more contractors, and so if staff could come back to us with kind of a proposal of how to make that work, because it feels like we're kind of at a dead end right now. So maybe brainstorm with your partners. And then would it be helpful if there were like council-to-council influence in the other cities, asking them to allow our third-party contractor to do the, is it called SHIPPLE?
SHIPPLE.
SHIPPLE?
I think at this stage, we're talking at staff level, under the guidance of Dirk, and if that is not successful, then I think we're looking at elevating that. So I guess I would ask for a couple of weeks, see if we can work out a reasonable solution.
Would you, something to do with that, Alderman Went? We just push it back to staff to come up with kind of a promotion for contractors, and then to continue their efforts with the SHIPPLE? Everybody okay with that? Is there anything else you want to share with us tonight, KJ?
No, I mean, I can certainly try to have, when I come back in two meetings.
Great.
We can talk a little bit more about housing, so.
Thank you very much, KJ.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the presentation. The next presentation is springtime free yard bag collection. JD Schultze.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know what, I'll just walk around. It's not like it's working. Rod is out, so I, we came last fall and talked to you a little bit about the possibility of doing another spring cleanup again this year without requiring residents to put the stickers on the bags. And so we were asked to come back again this spring. I think if Janine's okay, if she can hear it okay, and if the folks that are dialed in can hear me okay, then I think we're good, Don. But seeing the thumbs up from Alderman Went there. So anyway, so we're back in advance of the time that we would start our yard waste collection here in that first full week of April, asking if you folks would like to mimic that two-week collection or some type of free collection where you don't require the stickers, again, for 2020 like you did last year.
Thoughts? Move forward? Oh, we got a scary face there. What's the consensus of the council? We got a no over here. Everybody else is supportive of the free two weeks?
It'll be seven, one.
Alderman Went?
I'm in favor of this, but I'd just like to ask JD, if the group that was out for this two weeks collecting these bags and those sorts of things, if they weren't doing this, what would they be doing? I'm assuming this isn't other temporary employee, I mean, these are full-time employees that if they weren't collecting leaves, they'd be doing something else.
We do this anyway. That's when we start our program. It's just that last year, we waived the sticker fee on the bags, and yeah, they continued to, and it is one full-time employee, and then that's when our agreement with AFME is to start using seasonal supplements, so it's one full-time and one supplemental person typically, if we've got them engaged by then.
So would the council like to support the two weeks of free tags?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe consensus. Would you like a vote?
I think you took a vote last year.
I make a motion that we waive the bag fees for the first two weeks of collection.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. You vote for Alderman. Thank you, JD. Alderman Berg, we have to be really quick. Okay, so the Employee Assisted Program to Aid Eligible Home Buyers in Purchasing Homes Within the City Limits of Moline. Alderman Berg.
Would you like me to postpone to next meeting, Mayor, for lack of time?
Would you mind?
No, that's perfect.
Okay. And then we have Identification of Second Quarter Work Session Topics. Janine, we have a clear work session calendar right now, so is there any input from council what work sessions you want to do next? I think that we have done neighborhood stabilization and enhanced relationships with businesses in Moline. So I said before, I would recommend that we drop that in close to the ULI study, which is going to be in June. And then we have Repair Replaced Six Miles, Moline Business Park Redevelopment Plan, that's the airport municipal service evaluation, and the schools and the city enhanced relationship. So what do you all want to do for the next work session? Anything pressing there?
No, but I don't know, Mayor, if that this is, because our next one is going to be on the 14th, correct, of April?
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's, I mean, with all, everything that's going on right now, maybe we address those issues, because we're going to have some issues we need to probably deal with that are priority.
Okay, so waive the next work session and drop in a normal meeting?
I agree with Alderman Berg.
Normal meeting for April? Do you want to just leave it at that, and then we can reevaluate as we move forward? So we'll do another work session consideration at an upcoming meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Is there any public comment this evening? Anyone? No one? Okay, if there's no public comment, what I'd like to do is close out this and take a five-minute recess before we go into the council meeting. Is that acceptable to everybody? Is there any further business for committee of the whole? We are adjourned from the committee of the whole and I'm going to pull our council meeting to order. We are going to begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance, and will we be having an invocation this evening, Alderman Williams?
Be short, please.
I'll have a short invocation.
We should.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask for your guidance as we face the issues before us. Unfortunately, this includes the looming problem of the coronavirus. Please bring us closer together as a council so we can serve our citizens to the best of our abilities. We ask this in your holy name.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoemaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the whole council meeting minutes of March 10, 2020. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3005-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article 6, Division 2, Administrative Hearing Procedure for Public Safety Employee Benefit Claims, by amending Sections 2-6200 and 2-6201D, and by enacting one new, I'm sorry, one new Section 2-6202 pertaining to the same subject matter. Council Bill 3006-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 Police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 26-2113, manner of amending this article to remove the requirement that any amendment of Chapter 26, Article 2, the Moline Code of Ordinances be published by newspaper publication. Council Bill 3007-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 Police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 26-2304, please probationary period, to modify the probationary period for newly hired officers pursuant to the Illinois FOP Labor Council Agreement. Council Bill 3008-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 31 Taxation of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting one new Article 12 Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax to impose a tax pursuant to the Municipal Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax Law on persons engaged in the business of selling adult-use cannabis. Council Bill 4006-2020, a special ordinance amending the city of Moline's policy, entitled Policy Prohibiting Sexual Harassment, to add an annual training requirement and to adopt procedure for handling complaints of sexual harassment made by one elected official against another elected official. Resolutions. Council Bill 1027-2020, a resolution approving and accepting proposed changes to prior contract language as agreed to by and between the negotiators for the city of Moline and the UAW Local 2282 relating to wages, hours of work, and certain other conditions of employment for the contract term January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute in a testament agreement incorporating said changes with the UAW Local 2282 relating to wages, hours of work, and certain other conditions of employment. Council Bill 1028-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute in a test to a contract with Denver Incorporated for Motor Fuel Tax, Section 20-00000-01-GM, 2020 Joint and Crack Sealing Program, in the amount of $81,700. Council Bill 1029-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute an equitable sharing agreement and certification amendment between the federal government and the Moline Police Department, setting forth the requirements for participation in the equitable sharing program and certifying all receipts and expenditures of federal forfeiture funds, property, and interest during the last fiscal year. Council Bill 1030-2020, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI, and the Quad Cities Bomb Squad, formalizing the manner in which non-federal officers, certified as bomb technicians through the FBI Hazardous Devices School and assigned to one of the five bomb squads within the Springfield Division, will have deputized authority while acting under the direction and authority of the FBI. Council Bill 1031-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to apply for a state highway permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation and to execute the necessary forms in conjunction with the Microbrew Mile and 6K Road Race, sponsored by Children's Therapy Center of the Quad Cities, scheduled for Saturday, June 20, 2020.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda, the second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3009-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 2-3204 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Section 2-3204 Assistant City Administrator, by enacting one new Section 2-3205 Additional Personnel, which shall contain the text repealed from Section 2-3204.
Motion to approve 3009-2020?
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. That motion carries. Resolutions. Council Bill 1032-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute in a test to a contract with Brant Construction Company for Motor Fuel Tax, Section 20-00000-02-GM, 2020 Seal Coat Program, in the amount of $144,475.
Motion to approve Resolution 1032-2020? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Schoemaker.
Were we going back to the contractor on this?
Can I read a response to you? I apologize. This email came to me a little earlier and I didn't get it forward to you. Could I, would you like to read it? And can you all hear me okay? Janine?
Yes, thank you.
JD, this is from Joe. JD, concerning the discussion of rebidding the Seal Coat project, our team is suggesting not to rebid the project. During conversations with the contractor, it was determined that a large factor in their bid consideration involves the ability to mobilize to many different and unknown job sites. We do not have building sites completely predetermined. As the program begins, sites are added or removed from consideration as we sweep complaints and determine in the field. Another consideration is the competitiveness of the bids. The two contractors were within 10% of each other. We feel this gave us a failure representation of that construction market this season. Those considerations, along with the mentioned timeframe and scheduling benefits, give us confidence in the bids we received. It feels in the best interest of the city to accept the bids as submitted.
Who is that from?
That's from Joe Kuhman back.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Council Bill 1033-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute in a test to an employee leasing agreement with GovTemp USA LLC for leasing of an assigned employee to fill the position of interim city administrator for the city of Moline.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Should we be voting on this? There was an email that came out earlier today.
Yes, we should be voting on it.
Okay, motion to approve 1033-2020?
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Sorry, just lost the light and my pencil. I'm sorry, Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3010-2020, an ordinance authorizing the issuance taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A of the city of Moline, Illinois, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute in a test to an agreement disclosure with Robert W. Baird &amp; Company for underwriting services related to the refinancing of the 2020A bonds. Council Bill 3011-2020, consideration to amend Chapter 2, Section 2-3201 of the Moline Code of Ordinances, concerning executive authority during a public health emergency.
Motion to consider 3011-2020?
Second.
We have a motion to consider by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Then, motion to consider passes?
Motion to approve 3011-2020?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Schoemaker, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
So now for our council business. Anybody on Alderman Williams' side, including our people that are remotely coming in? Alderman Went?
Actually, I've got two things. The first is, the city of Moline provides fire protection service to South Moline Township, and recently I asked some questions about how that's set up and what all that entails. And I'd like to ask staff to provide us with a memo that includes recommendations on that partnership moving forward and a clear explanation on how that is currently being provided. Is that a motion?
Are you making a motion, Alderman Went? Are you looking for?
Well, if staff's okay, I can make a motion or just a general direction. If other Aldermen are okay with that.
JD, how would you like to handle that?
I've gotten down, you know how quickly he'd like that response. Can he hear me?
How quickly would you, what are you looking for in time?
Oh, six, eight weeks, or six weeks. Let's do six weeks.
Okay.
Are you comfortable moving forward with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and the council's all supportive of that? Thank you. Alderman Went, what was your second thing?
The next one was, recently we discussed storage units and where they can be and can't be, and outdoor storage sheds being built in commercial areas. I'd like to direct staff to go to plan commission and come back with recommendations on how to tighten that up, which may include a moratorium until they actually do come back with a resolution to change the code.
So Alderman Went, your recommendation to put that moratorium in place while they're considering that and flowing it through the process?
If Dirk, is that, is that possible or does that have to go through?
So, can you hear me? So, the, it doesn't affect zoning. A moratorium has to go through plan commission. So the way it was, is at your direction, we would take a moratorium to plan commission, have a public hearing on the moratorium. They would make their recommendation about it, and then it would come to you for action. And you could waive second readings and all the rest. That would be the quickest way to impose a moratorium. And then we could study the issues, you know, in greater detail, walk back through the public hearing process of plan commission. In the meantime, you wouldn't have people racing to do what they want to do. But moratoriums require a public hearing.
And that's what I'd like to do.
All right, we'll make that happen.
And council, are you supportive of that?
Sure.
Yep, we've got support on that. So if staff could execute, thank you so much. Is there anything else on Alderman Williams' side? How about Alderman Moyer's side? Anything this evening? Alderman Berg? Oh, wait, are you going to go into executive session? I've got one thing for our business, so I'm going to have Don Tabo to my screen. I just want to show you so that you kind of have a concept of what's going on. So I got communication from staff today, and they're going to put up on our website a link to, this is the Quad Cities COVID-19 Coalition. And so that's a group that's working together. It's got all of our public information officers from the different entities working together with public releases. And so if you click on this link right now, it gives you a press release, gives you a press release of what the most recent thing is that the coalition has put out to the public. And so what I'd like to do is enhance that. What I'd like to do is have a link on our website that will take people to this information as well as some things that are happening locally, like how we're handling our services. So if a resident wants to know if their garbage is going to get picked up, you know, they'll have a place to go to find out any kind of actions that we're executing regarding that. And the way I propose that we do that is through a landing page of live stories. So it'd be structured like this, and it would have these types of icons, but instead of revenue, it would have Moline resident, you know, interaction or services response for the COVID. It would have a link for our HR, so employees that are off are needing to understand how they're supposed to execute a leave because they need to stay home and take care of their child. That kind of thing would be on here. It would be, it would have the Quad City COVID Coalition link on here that would take them to that information. It would have the Rocka Island Health Department's information, so it'd have a link to them. It'd have a link to the Illinois Department of Health. They're having some separate information so that we can see what our COVID counts are in the state. And then it would have a link to Governor Pritzker's when he's doing his resolutions, so people could actually see the background of that, as well as the CDC. So that's my proposal to council. I wanted to see what your thoughts were on that. I think it would be helpful for our community members to have a place to go, that they can answer questions. The way live stories will set this up, and I don't have that brought up right now, but they'll have a search to the side. That search will trigger, whatever they type in there, will trigger from all of those different sites, a search on all of those different sites. So then it'll bring up a list of, like, say they're interested in homeless and how they're being addressed for COVID. Every one of those sites that have something to do with homeless and COVID would come up in their search. So that's my proposal. Are you comfortable with that? Is it okay to continue to proceed with that type of information? Okay, we're going to move forward on that then. Thank you. Okay, so Alderman Berg, did you have something for us? Or let me check with staff. Is there anything, JD, that you'd like to discuss with the council this evening? Okay. Alderman Berg?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees by ILCS 120/2C1.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Potter. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
This is for executive session, Alderman Parker?
Yeah, aye.
Did he? I'm sorry. I think you're muted. Purpose.
Not, I don't think so. But aye, yeah.
Alderman Went?
No, I'm not muted.
We can hear you now, Alderman Parker.
Okay, all right.
Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you. We got two ayes. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. We'll now convene an executive session. Just need one minute.